Good evening and welcome to our Kingsburg City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 21st, 2024. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Alex Brumley from the Refinery Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for who you are, who you are to us, Lord, and we thank you for this opportunity to steward this great city well that you've given us, as well as celebrate the career of one of our local law enforcements. We just thank you for his heart to serve and be faithful to this community, and Jesus, we give you all the glory, honor, and praise in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Councilmember Sylvan?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Here. Thank you. Item number two I have on our agenda is to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, why we have a packed house tonight. We have a presentation for our Police Lieutenant Kevin Penley, his retirement presentation. And first, I'd like to call up Chief Gadian.
Thank you, Councilmember North, members of the council. Good to be with you again. This is a particularly, particularly exciting occasion for us because when you have somebody who has spent an entire career, over thirty years in law enforcement, serving a community, that's something to stand up and take notice and certainly something to honor. So I'd like to ask Lieutenant Kevin Penley to step forward. So we have three presentations from the Kingsburg Police Officers Association, from the Kingsburg Police Department, and then the council also has a proclamation. And I'd like to invite Officer Derek Gagnon forward to, who's representing the Kingsburg Police Officers Association as their president.
Bring it down. Good evening, City Council. Good evening to the community. My name is Derek Gagnon. I am the President of the Kingsburg Police Officer Association. I also have Officer Moon, who's present with me, who is my Vice President for the Kingsburg Police Officer Association. This is kind of a surreal moment for all of us in the department, so I'll do my best to keep it together. I've been with the Kingsburg Police Department now for my, this is my eighth year, but prior to that, I worked for Selma. And no matter which department you worked for, where you were at, if anybody talked about Kingsburg PD, they knew about Luke Penley. He's done amazing stuff here in this department. I can, going back to his days of being a dare teacher at the schools, which I still stop people and they're like, I remember he was my dare teacher. So that's pretty amazing because I remember dare being such a huge impact on a lot of schools and kids, and I know that was something he held close to his heart. And just going through the motions, becoming a sergeant, becoming a lieutenant, I mean, I can tell you from our association, again, this is a difficult transition because we're so used to seeing him in the mornings, you know, yelling at me for eating a bad breakfast or my energy drinks. He would tell me the, what was better for me. I'm gonna miss that a lot because I still didn't listen to him. But just having him walk in, his presence, you know, just his knowledge, his mentorship, what he meant to this department, to this community, I know is gonna be tremendously missed. We have a plaque that we want to present to Lieutenant Penley. And for those of you that don't know, it's, this is for appreciation of his thirty-three years of service in supporting the Kingsburg Police Association, as well as this community from August 1990 to January 2024. That's an amazing accomplishment. You know, some of us just dream of making it twenty years in this job. For those who don't know, it's not easy. We go through a lot of stuff. But Lieutenant Penley is that guy that's just a machine. He's built like a machine, I can tell you. Again, his mentorship, being a role model, being there for us, being approachable, is something that we will miss. And we're still gonna bother him and find him, but I know from the speaking on behalf of the association, we just want to say thank you for all that you've done, not only for us, but community members and going forward in your ventures, the other lives you're gonna affect going forward. We thank you and we want to present you with this plaque, sir. And another thing we made, going back to him being built like a machine, he was really on me about getting a guide on. And as an association, we do some, we do 5K runs, we do Blue Runs, we do Torch Runs. Well, I don't, but they do. So we got a guide on. He had a lot of input on what we did because he was part of our association. This was something he put together. We carried it on runs. It was pretty cool to have, I think we're probably the only departments that had a guide on out there when we did the runs to represent us. I think even for the Dollar Horse Trial, we ran with it out there and it was pretty cool to see our colors flying out there. Not to say we're not gonna use anymore, but this specific one, we wanna give to him because he had, he put the input into this and this was his image. We also have in here some challenge coins, and it was hard for me to find, but I had to put it in here. Again, I go back to his dare days, there's a dare button for him because, again, that's just a testament of the person he is and the willingness to teach and do that. I can say doing it firsthand, it's not easy, so that's something that I think's amazing. And I'm gonna read something, if I may, off the plaque we have inside here. So I'm gonna read this, and it basically says, "This is to commemorate all your years of service to Kingsburg. As our leader, you have motivated us and mentored us to be the best we can be. We all can only strive to achieve your level of badassery." Excuse my language. "We dare you to say no to shooting like a stormtrooper, and that's all we gotta say about that. Stay dangerous." And if you guys don't know, Lieutenant Penley was pretty known in the department for making the award for badassery, and you got, you only got that from him. And if you got one, you held on to it for dear life because that meant you were, you did something really good. So it was very necessary to put this in here, so we also wanna present Lieutenant Kevin Penley with this shadow box that has all of these cool things, his lieutenant bar, his years of service, these equal five years of service. He has, you can see, one, two, three, four, five, six hash marks, and he also has his, we put his Sergeant stripes, our patch. We just wanna send him off and acknowledge all the hard work he's put in and all the respect we have for him as the police department, and again, he will be tremendously missed. So Lieutenant Penley, this is for you also. So on behalf of the Police Officer Association, Lieutenant, we wish you well. We hope nothing but the best for you, and I know where you live, so I'll still bother you. And I hope to see you around, sir.
It was an honor and pleasure working alongside you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, City Council.
Thank you to the members of the Kingsburg Police Officers Association. So I have a couple of presentations. The first one is the Distinguished Service Award Under Achievement for Lieutenant Kevin Penley. And I'll read you the citation. "Police Lieutenant Kevin Lee Penley began his law enforcement career in 1986 as a military police officer in the United States Army. He served in the regular Army, Army Reserves, and Army National Guard as a military police officer. During his time in the Army, Lieutenant Penley was stationed in the Philippines. Lieutenant Penley received an honorable discharge in 1993. Lieutenant Penley enrolled in the State Center Regional Training Facility Basic Police Academy Class 36 and graduated in January 1988. He was hired as a police officer with the King City Police Department and served with that agency from June 1988 to December 1989. He left law enforcement for a short period to work in the private sector, but returned as a volunteer reserve police officer with the Kingsburg Police Department in August 1990. In July 1991, Lieutenant Penley was hired as a full-time paid police officer with Kingsburg. As a police officer, Lieutenant Penley worked every assignment at the department, including patrol, dare, field training officer, and detective. Lieutenant Penley was promoted to sergeant in 2005 and again worked every assignment at that level. In addition to his regular duties, some of Lieutenant Penley's collateral assignments included custodian of evidence, crime prevention officer, and liaison for Neighborhood Watch. As a sergeant, Lieutenant Penley was selected to attend the Post Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute, an intensive course for law enforcement supervisors spanning eight months. In 1998, Lieutenant Penley returned to the State Center Regional Training Facility Police Academy as an evaluator and instructor, evaluation of police cadets and scenario tests, instruction in a variety of learning domains, and serving as the lead instructor in firearms and emergency vehicle operations course, or B V O C. Lieutenant Penley was promoted to police lieutenant in October of 2022 and served as the Operation Division Commander until his retirement. During his tenure with the Kingsburg Police Department, Lieutenant Penley has been involved in, with numerous positive community events and contacts, and some of the most high-risk and deadly law enforcement, or encounters an law enforcement officer can face. He's been in a couple shootouts. Lieutenant Penley has handled each of these situations with sensitivity, grace, and poise. Based on his outstanding service to the Kingsburg Police Department and the citizens of Kingsburg, Lieutenant Kevin Penley is awarded the Kingsburg Police Department Distinguished Service Award Under Achievement. Congratulations, Lieutenant Penley." Also on behalf of the Kingsburg Police Department, would like to present you with this plaque. And I don't wanna take it out of the box, but it's pretty nice. Presented to Lieutenant Kevin Penley in grateful appreciation for your thirty-two years of dedicated service, loyalty, and support to the City of Kingsburg Police Department, July 1991 to January 2024, representing his full-time service. And last, from the police department, I want to present you with an honorable discharge. Police Lieutenant Kevin Penley began his career with the Kingsburg Police Department as a volunteer reserve police officer in August 1990. He was promoted to a full-time position as a police officer in July 1991. During his career, Lieutenant Penley has served in a variety of assignments, including patrol, field training officer, detectives, and dare. Lieutenant Penley was promoted to police sergeant in April 2005 and police lieutenant in October 2023 and retired on January 31st, 2024. Lieutenant Penley has loyally served the citizens of Kingsburg with honor and distinction for thirty-three years, five months, and twenty-nine days. This is to certify that Lieutenant Kevin Penley is hereby honorably discharged from the Kingsburg Police Department this thirty-first day of January 2024. This certificate is awarded as a testimonial to his devoted and faithful service to the citizens of Kingsburg. Congratulations. And I believe council has something?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
First of all, I want to tell you thank you for your service to our community and all of your sacrifice. I know that in your job, that it's not only your sacrifice, but your family. Also, thank you for keeping our community safe, and Kingsburg is better because of your service here. To honor you, we do have a proclamation, and I'm going to read through it. Some of it is the history that Chief already shared, but I'm gonna read that to you and then I'll hand it to you. City of Kingsburg Proclamation. Whereas Police Lieutenant Kevin Penley has retired from the city after thirty-three years of loyal service, and whereas Kevin was a member of the U.S. Army Military Police from 1986 to 1987, the U.S. Army Reserve Military Police from 1987 to 1990, and the California Army National Guard Military Police from 1990 to 1993. He attended the State Center Police Academy Class 36 and graduated in 1988. He was a police officer for King City from 1988 to 1989, and whereas Kevin joined the Kingsburg Police Department as a reserve officer in 1990. He became a full-time officer in 1991, promoted to sergeant in 2005, and promoted to lieutenant in 2022. In 2006, Kevin earned his bachelor's degree in management with honors from Ashdell College. In 2018, Kevin graduated from the Post Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute. And whereas, over the years, Kevin has successfully completed many assignments, including patrol, detectives, dare officer, field training officer, evidence custodian, crime prevention officer, liaison for Neighborhood Watch, and explorer post advisor. Through these assignments, Kevin has provided leadership for numerous youth and officers early in their career. And whereas, the impact on many lives and the positive influence on the Kingsburg community is Lieutenant Penley's favorite part of being a police officer. Kevin has received numerous awards over his career. He is known for being steadfast, reliable, loyal, approachable, always helpful with a wealth of knowledge, always ready to assist, and an institution at the police department. And whereas, the City Council wishes to commend Kevin Penley for the professionalism and effort for which he has completed his duties for the past thirty-three years. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Kingsburg hereby expresses heartfelt appreciation and gratitude for Kevin Penley's selfless commitment, example, and high standard of excellence for the betterment of Kingsburg and the community. Thank you.
Say, ready? One, two, three. Oops. One, two, three.
Code act moment time. Come on up, guys. Good. Yeah, we're, so, yeah, I think we're good for pictures. So just one more thing to wrap up. If you wanna, as you were. Two things. I want to recognize so that Kevin is really kind of not leaving us because I roped him into being a reserve police officer, kind of how he started with us. He's back doing that. And his, he's also joined here tonight by the Director of the State Center Regional Training Facility Police Academy, Gary Fief. Gary, stand up. Kevin's kind of new old boss, he'd been working for him for twenty, twenty, twenty-three years. And my boss, because I worked there part-time as well, Gary's a retired Assistant Chief with the California Highway Patrol, ran their police academy at one point, and has been running our police academy for the last several years. So Kevin has had a significant impact on training law enforcement officers in the Central Valley for many, many years, and will continue to do that as well. And we're also, on behalf of the Kingsburg Police Officers Association, I know we have a pretty robust agenda tonight, but if you have time, your time allows afterwards, they would like to invite you over to the police department for a small reception, little finger food, that kind of stuff. So the council is more than welcome to join us over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. First off, I'd like to thank God for giving me such a long career, the citizens of Kingsburg for giving me the authority to serve them, and I appreciate my two bosses that are here because I wouldn't have careers without them. I appreciate the council for their honors, and I especially appreciate the citizens of Kingsburg for giving me the authority to serve them. I really appreciate all this attention. Thank you.
Need some help carrying your stuff?
Would you like to take any other pictures before you head to your reception? You'll take some up there? Thank you. Thank you. I'll wait for just a second.
Okay, we will move on to item number four. Item number four is public comment. This is a time for any citizen to come forward and address the City Council on any issue within its jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. There's a maximum of five minutes that is allowed for each speaker, and our city clerk will set a timer. And just as a reminder, a couple things when you come up to the microphone. If you can let us know if you're a citizen, state your name, and if you're a citizen of Kingsburg. And then additionally, just so that you know, during public comment, we, as a council, are not allowed to respond. Do we have anyone here for public comment tonight?
Brenda Prado, and I am a citizen of Kingsburg. I'm here tonight to respectfully urge the city to make a few policy changes regarding animal services. I was informed today that there's a policy that states that officers do not respond to injured cats. According to Penal Code 5971(c)(1), it states that they need to, so I'm not sure if that is a, if city policy takes precedence over California law. And I had it right here on my phone. It states, "Any peace officer, humane society officer, animal control officer shall convey all injured cats and dogs found without their owners in a public place directly to a veterinarian known by the officer to be a veterinarian, veterinarian, who ordinarily treats dogs and cats for determination of whether the animal shall be immediately and humanely euthanized, or shall be hospitalized until proper care and given emergency treatment." I've had two found cats in the last two days that I watched die. There was no help for them. So if this is a policy, I would urge you to look into that and possibly change it to follow the Penal Code section that applies there. Also, it's been almost two months since we've had any animal services that I'm aware of. Since second chances contract was not renewed December 31st, I would, I would assume that Kingsburg no longer had a contract with them either. I was wondering if that's legal? Are we going to be doing anything about this anytime soon? The sooner the better. Selma's already offering low-cost spay and neuter for cats. They did an open house with free microchips, free ID tags. We need that here, too. We still have a lot of loose dogs running around with owners. Owners are known, I know who they are, lots of people know who they are. No one's being cited. They're not being cited. There's no consequences for letting your dogs run around. I also urge you to look into Selma Helping Kingsburg because we need it. I'm happy to know that there is now a freezer here in town at Public Works that the deceased animals can go to. Had to utilize that with one of the cats a couple days ago. Public Works came and picked it up, which was amazing. Very thankful that we did have, we have that now. We have dogs and cats from our town already going to Selma Animal Services. Is that for free? Are we paying them? We need to pay them. We need them here to enforce. We need an animal control officer, even if it's part-time, even, you know, on a call-by-call basis, they wouldn't have to be here patrolling just to show people that if you're not responsible for your animals, there's consequences. We need spay and neuter programs. They can get grants for that. We can get grants here for that. We need to do something. We have mandatory microchipping here now, which is wonderful, but we need to work on spay and neuter and citing people that do not keep their animals secured. It's only a matter of time, well, it already has happened. It's a matter of time before something happens again, where the city's gonna be liable. So I implore you to please hurry up, speed up the process, it's been almost two months, and get something figured out with the city of Selma, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Sir, if you'd like to come up?
So I actually came with one thing, but I have a second to say to the board. My name's John Amada. I used to be a resident King City, grew up here. I just want you guys to know as a city council, how much your fire chief did for the service today for Chris Nelson in Selma. It was amazing. Chris was the one I got into the fire department, so it was good to see the support of Kingsburg. Second thing is, I'm here concerned about the new pickleball courts going in on the northeast side of town. The measurements for the court aren't right. The concrete's already been poured. We won't be able to play on the courts the way they're set up. So I just found out about your guys' meeting kind of late, so I'm kind of saying we need to go someplace with it or have a talk or what, because we're not gonna be able to use them the way they're set up. So that's my concern, and that's why I'm here. Everybody else from the pickleball community would have been here, but we got church tonight. So that's why I came. So I can leave my number with somebody, so it's 559? You have it, I think, right? Yeah, just, if somebody will reach out so we can figure out how to fix it. I just don't want you guys to finish it, and then we gotta tear it apart. So, and there's a lot of people in this town that play. So, all right? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We'll have staff reach out to you. Anyone else for public comment? You're walking the wrong direction.
Sorry.
Okay, hearing none, I will close public comment. Item number five is consent calendar. Items considered routine in nature are to be placed on the consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recital, reading ordinances by titles, only an adoption of recommended actions contained in staff reports. Tonight, we have 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5. Do we have anyone from council that wants to pull an item?
No.
Anyone from staff? Any public that would like an item pulled? Okay, then I will need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, regular calendar. 6.1, public hearing, consideration of annexation 2024-01, pre-zoned 2024-01, and mitigated negative declaration for the Moat, help me out, I was here wrong.
Metoian.
Annexation project. Staff report by Community Development Director Holly Owen, sponsored Community Development Department. I'm going to open the public hearing. And presentation by Community Development Director Holly Owen.
Good evening, Councilmember North, and city council members, and the members of the public. I'm Holly Owen, Community Development Director for the city. The agenda item tonight is the consideration of annexation 2024-01, called the Metoian annexation, pre-zone 2024-01, and the acceptance of the mitigated negative declaration for that annexation. The, it's a reorganization. It's a city-sponsored annexation of 13.18 acres of property into the city of Kingsburg. It's contiguous or alongside the city limits, north of the Kingsburg Business Park, and southwest of Highway 99, as shown in your attachment E in your staff report. This reorganization will require several actions to annex the property. First of all, there is an annexation action into the city of Kingsburg, known as that Metoian reorganization. There is pre-zoning of the property from Fresno County's AE 20 Zone District to Kingsburg Highway Commercial Zone District, and approving the mitigated negative declaration environmental document for that reorganization and acceptance of that monitoring program. The Kingsburg General Plan does designate this as highway commercial for this parcel, and the subject property is in the Kingsburg sphere of influence, so there's not a sphere of influence expansion that's required for this annexation. The reorganization is consistent with the Kingsburg General Plan and zoning ordinance as set forth in municipal code. It's also consistent with the memorandum of understanding between the County of Fresno and the City of Kingsburg. This document, this memorandum of understanding, addresses annexation issues in general, among other issues. And this is an annexational property out of this county and into the city, and it involves the tax-sharing issues that are related to that annexation of the property in the city of Kingsburg. As part of the annexation, an initial study was done on the project. It was determined that a mitigated negative declaration was appropriate for that. That results in mitigation measures, and that's attached as Attachment B in your staff packet. Though, as background information, in 2021, this was a discussion that was begun with the city and the property owner about that potential annexation of the property and pre-zoning the property to highway commercial. As with all annexations, a potential project was needed as part of the annexation application with Fresno, LAFCO, to the county. And as part of that memorandum of understanding that was mentioned with the county, it requires a potential use or project to be represented as 25% of the property under consideration. City and the property owner agree that there were mutual benefits in working together to facilitate this annexation. And at the council meeting of August 8th, 2022, there was an agreement that was drafted to develop the vacant land, and the following benefits at that point for the landowner and the city were identified. For the landowner, there is extension of the road right-of-way sewer water and ancillary utilities from Avenue B up to the north. The cost of that infrastructure would be borne by the city. Annexation of the property into the city and pre-zoning the property to highway commercial, which is an advantage for the property owner. And there's a tax benefit donation of three acres of the portion to the city. For the city benefits, that three acres is received for future use, including the potential construction of a new city hall or city chamber facility, as one possible outcome. There's 10 acres of commercial property with highway frontage, which will be available for development with a potential for property tax and sales tax revenue to be generated for the city. The 10 acres will be, will remain to be owned by the landowner. There's also to be a use of a restrictive covenant to control the future use of that 10 acres and the development. After the execution of that agreement by council, staff was directed to initiate the annexation process, which involved the hiring of consultants to prepare an initial study, mitigated negative declaration. That's Attachment A in your staff report. It was released and circulated for the required public comment period. There was one comment letter that was received during that time from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. A number of those issues raised are addressed in the initial study, which deals with air quality issues. Any future projects that come in for that property will be subject to further environmental assessment, including the air quality impacts. Planning Commission heard this annexation on January 11th and recommended to city council at this point the approval of the annexation, the pre-zone, and adopting the environmental document. There's some discussion about the reorganization, and one of the points that can be made is that the reorganization involves detachment of the property, a formal detachment of the property from the Fresno County Fire Protection District, Consolidated Irrigation District, and the Kings River Conservation District. Since the property is contiguous to the city, the approval should be made by LAFCO, as no county island will be created by the annexation. The approval of the annexation must be consistent with a number of planning and policy documents. Some of these are LAFCO documents, some of these are the memorandum of understanding between the county and the city, and some of these are our own city planning documents, and that consistency is met by this project for all of those documents. There is a pre-zone action that was needed, and the Planning Commission was required to make findings as to whether that pre-zoning of the property would achieve objections that are in our municipal code. They're listed in your staff report as A through H, and some of the ones in particular that would apply would be appropriate location of community facilities to protect and promote appropriately-located commercial and industrial activities in order to preserve and strengthen the city's economic base, to protect and enhance property values and the city's natural assets, and to ensure the unimpeded development of new urban expansion that's logical, desirable, and in conformance with the objectives and policy of the general plan. Again, the Planning Commission did find that all these pre-zoning requirements were met, and they have forwarded down to city council for your consideration. The notice of intent was, for the mitigated negative declaration was published in the Business Journal. There is a mitigation monitoring and reporting program as Attachment B in your staff report. That is what derives from an initial study, when there are recommendations to consider potential environmental impacts. There's a checklist that's given to the city as to how to address those potential environmental impacts, and that's what a mitigation monitoring program is for. It's a guide for the city to address some of those potential concerns. The city doesn't review site plans, because under the zoning ordinance, those are processed by in-house staff. But we have included the parcel map and site plan as background information as Attachment F. Any proposal, again, for this parcel will have to be reviewed and will require any corresponding environmental assessment that may be required at that time. The recommended action is that you adopt the Resolution 2024-009. It's attached as part of your packet, and I am here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open up council discussion. Any questions, discussion on this item?
Stacy, did you have any? I don't know if I had any question. I just, maybe a comment more than anything. So you said possible use for certain items. This land acquisition that will become an asset of the city could be used for basically anything the city deems necessary? Or is it actually set in stone that it has to be used for a certain purpose? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I believe that there is no, there's no restriction on what could be used, but it is going, it's land that will be now under the city's control. So one would assume that that would be a city or public services of some sort.
Right, so, yeah, something that the city deemed, it could be whatever, but it's a city parcel. It's not something that the city would then sell, like an asset that they would say, okay, we're going to end up selling it and using it for cash flow or something like that. Is that an option as well?
That's a little more complicated road to take at this point. It could conceivably be done at some point in the future. There is a process for dispersment of what the state would call surplus land, and that's its own, that's its own process. That's not anticipated at this time, however.
Okay, so it gets more complicated. So the annexation is basically so we can basically take possession of the donated property, correct?
Although I wasn't here at the time when this was originally discussed, the understanding that I have on this is that this was an exchange, and the city has received as part of this annexation process, three acres of land to do with it what they deem appropriate and feasible, and the rest of the acreage will be developed, you know, for commercial uses or, you know, within certain guidelines for what the private property owner wishes.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? Okay, then I will open up public comment. Do we have any public here that would like to make a comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to continued council discussion. Any more discussion?
No.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. And item H on this agenda item is adoption of Resolution 2024-009. If that is what we would want to do, then I will need a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
That was a lot of work. It was like 200 pages, something like that.
Some of that was mine, yes.
It's appreciated. Thank you. Item 6.2, Stone Plaza Forgivable Loan and Upper Floor Rehab Program Discussion. Staff report prepared by City Manager Alexander Henderson, and sponsor is by the city manager, as well as the presentation.
I'll thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. This item is regarding the development of the property located at the corner of Draper and California Streets, formerly known as the Old Stone Hotel and Commercial Properties, now known as Stone Plaza. The former building housed tenants on the ground floor, which included office, retail, and service commercial uses. The upper floor was once a hotel, but had been vacant and unutilized for several years. In October of 2016, the building was lost to a fire that was believed to have started due to faulty wiring on the second level. Subsequently, the city council entered into a development agreement that identified terms for new mixed-use development. It would include roughly 19,000-square-foot two-story building, including 8,700 square feet of commercial space on the ground level, 10 market-rate apartments, an open courtyard, and parking provided on an adjacent lot to the south. As part of the development agreement, the property owner was also allowed to seek additional financial assistance related to eligible incentive programs. Tonight, we're going to be discussing two of those programs for your consideration. The first is the forgivable loan program. This program was created in late 2019, early 2020, and utilizes what are called residual property taxes that once went to the Kingsburg Redevelopment Agency. The council designated these residual payments for the specific purpose of partnering with eligible businesses and property owners on projects that have a long-term benefit to the community. The guidelines of the program offer up to $75,000 per eligible project unless higher amounts are sought, which would require council consideration and approval. Currently, the incentive fund has a fund balance of $563,780, although $300,000 of that was earmarked in 2020 for the former Bank of America building, the Gold Standard Mortgage Project. During the Finance Committee meeting on January 22nd, 2024, the committee recommended the council approve up to $250,000 for Stone Plaza, pending all final appraisals, and that all requirements of the program were satisfied as determined by the city attorney and the city manager. And just a brief background on this program, this helps pay for life safety items, ADA requirements, a lot of the standard requirements that are building code-driven or fire code-driven that are not optional for owners, but, you know, can often become obstacles. And so the council adopted this program in order to help, especially in the downtown, because we have a lot of older buildings, but also new construction is eligible as well. Previously, we've provided funding for what is now the Casaros and Roadhouse Shared Building and the Magash Building. Those are approved projects that have been paid, and then obviously the GSM Building as well. Are any questions on that portion before I go to the second incentive program? The second incentive program is our Upper Floor Rehabilitation Loan Program. This started in 2017, where the council approved this program intended to spur residential improvement in the downtown. The residential component in downtowns can be significant to the vibrancy of downtown quality, including contributing to the property value in and around downtown. Higher density contributes to the local base for local merchants, and adds character of downtown, re-energizes vacant spaces. It was the belief that without public incentives, the costs associated with building new or rehabbing century-old buildings often prove prohibitive. Approved guidelines in this program limit the financial contributions from the city at $20,000 per unit, with a $100,000 per project max. As part of the city's fiscal year 2024 annual budget, $100,000 was included for this program. Stone Plaza project has 10 market-rate apartments that would qualify for this program. The builder of Stone Plaza, who is here this evening, has worked closely with staff during the development and construction of Stone Plaza in order to qualify for the two programs. Because both programs require real property collateral in order to secure repayment of the loans in case of default, any collateral used must have a loan-to-value ratio of at least 80%. As such, the developer is getting an updated appraisal on property that would secure the loan, giving the city first position, and he's actually provided that updated appraisal earlier this week. earlier this week. Along with financial limits, each incentive program lays out specific guidelines for eligibility, as well as protective language that requires the site to remain either in commercial for the forgivable loan program, commercial use, or residential use for the upper floor program for at least 10 years. If these conditions are not met, the developer is required to repay the loan to the city. This is secured through a promissory note of deed and prepared by the city. This says the promissory note shall identify a 0% interest deferred payment loan with a 10-year term and secured by deed of trust. We have in the last two secured those promissory notes with 4% interest payments. 10% of the principal loan balance will be forgiven each year. The property remains in compliance. Failure to maintain compliance for the full 10-year term of the promissory note will result in repayment of the entire principal balance of the promissory note to the city. We also use scoring criteria to determine project eligibility for both of these programs. Both of those documents, those matrices, are included in your supplemental information this evening, and the property qualifies under both programs. So there are two actions that staff was recommending this evening. The approval of up to $250,000 for the forgivable loan program conditioned upon all eligibility requirements met to the satisfaction of the city attorney and city manager, and the approval of $100,000 for the Upper Floor Rehabilitation Loan Program conditioned upon all eligibility requirements being met to the satisfaction of the city attorney and city manager. That concludes my report this evening, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. And again, the property owner is in attendance this evening if there are questions of him. Thank you.
We'll get public comment first, and then we'll do council discussion and questions. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, then we'll move to council discussion. Do we have any questions for the owner or for our city manager?
No questions, but we reviewed this at the Finance Committee, and we are recommending that we go over the $75,000. I think both of these programs are fabulous additions and have really helped to make our downtown what it is, and I'm excited to see the-- the Stone Hotel is beautiful, and it was utilized to a small extent before the fire, but I mean, it's just, it is a building that hasn't been used to its fullest potential in years. And the other one is the old Woods Building, the Casaros and Roadhouse Building that sat empty for years, and these programs have been great in getting these buildings up and functional and working beautifully. So I think we have the money in the account, so I fully support, you know, awarding the project a higher than, you know, the minimum or the limit set.
I just had a couple things. I love the Stone Plaza project. It really turned out nice, and so this particular loan program, I totally agree with Council Member Smith. I mean, it's really done great. In addition to everything else, it's done a great job to revitalize or take downtown to the next level with bid and chamber and everybody working collaboratively. So this is just one part of it, and I totally agree. I think that we can go over the minimum $75,000 because the project was so big and so robust, and I'm in full support of it.
I agree. When you talk to people who are coming to Kingsburg recently, they comment on Stone Plaza. It was well worth the wait. It is beautiful. Did amazing job on it. I just have a question. Is this, these two action items, will they require separate motions, or will it be one if we move forward?
I think because they're two separate programs, we'd prefer two separate motions.
Any more council discussion? Okay. So what we will need then is we will need a motion for the first item. So that would be that staff is recommending the approval of $250,000 for the forgivable loan program conditioned upon all eligibility requirements met to the satisfaction of the city attorney and city manager. So that would be our first motion if we want to move forward.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our second one is staff is recommending the approval of $100,000 for the Upper Floor Rehab Loan conditioned upon all eligibility requirements met to the satisfaction of the city attorney and the city manager. So I'll need a motion for that.
So moved. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6.3, Building Division Report, calendar year 2023. Staff report and presentation by Building Official A.J. O'Connell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A.J. O'Connell, Building Official. I'm pleased to present to you the annual report for the Building Division for the calendar year 2023. My presentation tonight will provide a brief synopsis of the full report that highlights significant data and accomplishments for the division. The Building Division is tasked with the administration, implementation, and enforcement of the adopted codes and standards in the city. The Division accomplishes these tasks through three basic services to the public: permit issuance, plans examination, and inspections. Before I dive into the report, I must convey gratitude to the citizens of Kingsburg. Time and again, our neighbors within this community have shown a commitment to a safe and resilient built environment. The people of Kingsburg are committed to ensuring that the homes they live in, the restaurants they eat at, the places where they work, the schools they send their children to, and any other building is erected and constructed to the standards of safety that we are all committed to ensuring. It makes our jobs that much easier when the population understands the need for building codes, the importance of obtaining a building permit, and the value of inspections. This type of community buy-in is truly remarkable. I must also preface this summation by professing appreciation to the mayor and city council for their continued support and recognition. This legislative body acknowledges the importance of robust building and safety efforts within our community. In all our interactions since becoming your building official, I have felt the support and commitment from this council. When I speak to other colleagues in my profession about the support that this council has provided to our division, their reply is one of coveted envy. Whether it is the collective adoption of building codes or volunteering to do ride-alongs with staff, the mayor and city council, you need to be given effusive praise for your encouragement and guidance. To say that the construction industry over the past five years has experienced whiplash is an understatement. From the inarguable highest of highs during the pandemic, construction has slowed considerably. In 2023, the industry saw rising interest rates, higher-than-normal inflation, material and labor shortages, and uncertainty around the economy as a whole. While these may seem like abstract and macroeconomic concepts, the city of Kingsburg was not immune from these effects. In 2023, the Building Division issued 590 total building permits. This represents a 25% decrease from the number of issued permits issued in 2021. However, it should be noted that the 2021 levels for permits were at a four-year high, and this year's numbers are more in line with permit numbers from before the pandemic. Broken down further, 2023 saw a roughly 25% decrease in the number of residential building permits issued from 2022. Solar was by far the most issued building permit for residential, accounting for more than 40% of all the residential permits issued. I would be remiss if I did not mention that 38 permits were issued in 2023 for new single-family dwellings. The deficit in residential permits and permit activity in 2023 was not shared with commercial projects. 2023 saw a rebound of commercial building activity from the pandemic lull. 60 permits were issued for commercial projects within the city with a total valuation of over $16 million. Tenant improvement projects represented the largest share of valuation of all construction projects, representing 54% of the total assessed valuation of commercial projects in Kingsburg. Significant commercial permits that were issued in 2023 include the Grace Church Tenant Improvement, the T-Mobile Rooftop Solar Project, and the Police Station renovation. The robust commercial activity was reflected in the total fees collected and subsequently the direct revenue for the Building Division. Commercial projects generated nearly $400,000 in total fees despite representing only a fraction of the overall permits issued for the division. The total revenue for the Building Division in 2023 was almost 3/4 of $1 million, with permit fees accounting for 54% of the total revenue. The final basic service that the Building Division provides for the community is the inspection of projects where permits have been issued. 2023 saw nearly 2,200 requested inspections by permit applicants. Final inspection requests were accounted for 38% of those requested inspections performed, with projects being finalized at a rate 13% higher in 2023 than in 2022. More than 1,400 inspections were approved, which represents a 64% rating of the inspections done. Corrections were written for less than a quarter of the requested inspections. 2023 saw the finalization and issuance of certificates of occupancy for the following notable projects: the Stone Plaza Residential Occupancies, Valley Health Center, the Print Theory Industrial Complex, and the Bento To Go Tenant Improvement. While concurrently managing this activity is important, to recognize some non-permit-related significant measures. In January, the city of Kingsburg began implementing the 2022 California Building Standards and International Swimming Pool and Spa Codes. Formal adoption of these standards through ordinance by the mayor and city council had not simultaneously occurred in over a decade. In March, the Building Division was awarded a $40,000 grant from the State of California Energy Commission for the implementation of an online permitting platform for certain residential solar projects. This platform, Solar App Plus, was formally launched in August by the Building Division. In June, the mayor and city council approved a groundbreaking drone inspection program for the Building Division. While more information on this program will be presented at the next regular meeting, the program has been an unmitigated success in keeping our Building Division staff safe. In looking ahead at the upcoming year, the Building Division will be actively developing and coordinating numerous projects. Foremost, in order to comply with the evolving state mandates on accessory dwelling units, the Building Division has begun working with the Planning Commission on developing a design concept for a city-standard, pre-approved accessory dwelling unit plan for city council review. The mayor and city council should expect this proposal to be brought forward within the next few months. Additionally, in order to better align efforts with other divisions in the city, the Building Division is actively beta-testing the construction permit module for the GovPilot permitting software. While this program is only currently being used right now for simple permit issuances, it is intended to fully replace the existing outmoded permitting software that we currently have within the next six months. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I will open it up to public comment before we do council discussion. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? Hearing none, I will bring it to council discussion. Any questions, comments?
Just a comment. I think that's a very detailed report, A.J. Thank you for putting that together. It's a lot of information, and it seems like you guys have been doing a lot of work when you look at the numbers, right? So credit to you, Holly and Dana, and we appreciate you, you know, enforcing what you guys do. Thank you.
Okay, no more council discussion. This is an informational item, so there's no action needed. Thank you so much, A.J.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When we want to feel good about ourselves, we're going to ask you to come back up. Item 6.4, Kingsburg Tri-County Healthcare District Grant Cycle. Staff report and presentation by Community Services Director Adam Castaneda.
Well, thank you, members of council. I have just a staff report today about, in regards to the Kingsburg Healthcare District Grant Cycle 2024. January 17, I did an initial presentation to council regarding the opening of the grant cycle. It's a partnership that we've had with the County Kingsburg Healthcare District since 2017. The Healthcare District provides grants to various public and private organizations that provide health-related services to the Kingsburg community and surrounding areas. Their grant application opens in January of every year, gives organizations an opportunity to submit applications by May 1, and then they essentially announce awards in the summer months of June and July. In January, when we first presented this to council, it was just to kind of get some general feedback and some input on potential projects for the upcoming cycle. My department, working with other departments of the city, have come up with several ideas, and I have representatives from the Fire and Police Department tonight here to answer any questions that you have. But in the staff report, we include the five potential projects that the Fire Department is seeking to submit an application for. We have two from the Police Department and then one from the Community Services Department. And so I will kind of conclude that there. If there's any particular questions that you have on the projects and their priority list, tonight, we're really just looking for some guidance and some input from council on whether the city can go and seek funding for all these potential projects, or if there are select few that you would like for us. And of course, the Townsend Group that would probably be doing the majority of the work this year, since this is their second year working on this grant cycle and getting these applications in, it'll be a partnership, of course, with them, and they'll kind of lead on that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I'll open up the floor to Chief Dadian and Chief Perkins on their grant applications.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Council discussion?
Can I ask a question, Chief Perkins?
Yes, ma'am.
The items on the ambulance.
Yes, ma'am.
It's deemed a rescue ambulance. Is that different than an ambulance?
Yes, by definition, our ambulances are paramedic rescue ambulances because they are paramedic firefighters. They're not just a paramedic ambulance like you would have for the city of Selma. It's a completely distinct, different model that we provide the services. So they are all firefighter paramedics or firefighter EMTs. They also have the Jaws of Life, high-angle, low-angle rope rescue equipment, as well as their self-contained breathing apparatus and their personal protective equipment, all on that apparatus. They combine forces to make an effective response force for firefighting simultaneously when there's a fire call, or they break apart and then go to an EMS call. That's why the cost of these things are broken out as they are, and that's why the cost is extremely different than you would see for a much smaller ambulance that you could provide the same service for as our counterpart to the north of us does. They only do specific EMS actions, and that's it, which does impact their total firefighting force.
So all of our ambulances, this is just an additional ambulance?
Correct. This is just a replication of the current ambulance model that we have.
I was thinking it was a different type. Thank you.
No.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I have a couple of questions while you're up there. First of all, thank you for your hard work with the Healthcare District over the last several years. I see that 10 of the last 16 grants that we were awarded went to the Fire Department, and I know they've been great partners, getting your department a lot of what has been needed for a long time, and I appreciate that. I believe they have just over $1 million to give, and when I was adding up these five items, it's over $1 million. So my question to you would be, these five items, what priority would you put them in?
So specifically, if you looked at number one, that would be our highest priority, again, by direction, because I think it's a needed item for us to move that same staffing model along. That was our initial intent when we provided that. Again, we will ask for the same extension of what they've already provided for the next three years. And there was an actual typo. I think the fiscal year was actually supposed to be 24, 25 through 27, 28, not 25, 26 to 27, 28. So three years of the same funding that they've been, which is 50% of six of the firefighter paramedics.
What would be your next one?
Number two would be, number two, the actual rescue ambulance. Number two would be, number two, the actual rescue ambulance chassis. And again, the reason that that's a priority item, we have to get that online, much as Chief Dadian has expressed, the problem right now with any kind of emergency service equipment is it's extremely long build times. So right now, they're slated at 36 months. So for us to get an ambulance chassis is that amount of money, and that puts it on the production line, and that chassis being the motor, the wheels, the transmission, all of that. It's a placeholder. We get the money for that, and then it starts production, and then another bill would come due later on. But again, that's another part of that. And again, most of this was done specifically by the ask of the hospital district as well, because in the past, they had said, if you can break these grants down in more of a smorgasbord idea, where if we have more money, we can give you more money, and they have smaller amounts. So that was really kind of that emphasis. Number three is actually number five, which is the rescue ambulance cab and patient care unit buildup, and that's the $300,000 item. And number three and number four are items that can come at any point in time. But again, if they opted to say, yes, we want to fully support it, given them the option to expand everything or expand to one or two things. That was their request from previous grant cycles.
So the rescue ambulance EMS equipment and the rescue ambulance equipment, those are two that could wait?
Yes, because those are basically ones, if we had them funded, we would purchase the equipment, which would put a placeholder, but three years from now, the estimated cost will increase by 20%. That's the current national average for medical, durable medical equipment. So again, that does save us money if we have the option to do that. But if we had a part of what do we want to prioritize, it would be number one, then number two, and number five.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Chief?
I don't think I have any questions. I just have a comment. Thank you for, you know, going to the Kingsburg Healthcare District meetings and, you know, communicating with them as to the need for the health and wellness of the citizens that we all share here in Kingsburg. So thank you for that. And then Adam's been at the meetings as well, and so thank you, Adam, for your attention there as well. I think it really helps when you guys go and give a presentation as to the needs of all of the community that we all represent and the tax dollars that we're trying to be good stewards of. So I think there's a need here. You put in, you know, a great presentation for the ambulance. I thought it was good that you're like, yeah, we're at 150,000 miles now on some of these ambulances plus, and it just keeps going. If we don't put in for a build now, you'll wake up one day and have an ambulance that's got 250,000, 300,000 miles on it, which is less reliable. And I don't know if everybody's excited about a less reliable ambulance. So I appreciate the fact that you're ahead of it. I really do, because I think it means a lot, and the people that, you know, that put it in that context and understand that, it's good. So I appreciate you being ahead of it rather than behind it.
And just for information, the reason that we broke this out for mileage and why that becomes important is as we become busier, and now we are, again, every single year, we've clicked up notches. This last year was a, it's only a 2% increase over the previous year for total call volume, but that still puts us at over 3,000 calls a year for one station where we're at now. So it's really very close to much larger cities trying to do the same type of event, but we're also providing that paramedic transport ambulance service, which is a much more in-depth service than many other communities actually serve. And in addition, one of our units, the one that we actually retired and made a Community Emergency Response Team vehicle, had 400,000 miles when I came here in 2019. And that was the reason we needed to move it out, was there was a plan in place to replace it, but if we don't start now, we will end up with units just like that again. So we need to be proactive.
Understood.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for Chief Dadian or for Adam on the other items? The Police Department ask, and then the Kingsburg Community Services Department is the 50% of Senior Citizen Hot Meal Program?
Okay, so when it comes to the Police Department, thank you, Chief, for putting together, you know, those grants also. The Kingsburg Healthcare District has voiced their, you know, opinion that they don't see grants from the Police Department, so I appreciate that you put that together, and those are two very, very, seems like very, very good and worthwhile items for the grant process. And then when it comes to the senior center, I didn't have a question. Sorry, Chief. I brought you up. I'm sorry.
Thank you for your kind words.
Sorry, Chief. Yeah, my bad. And then when it comes to the senior center, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the last Kingsburg Healthcare District, they devoted funds for a pilot program for two continental breakfasts per week for the seniors. And so that was to be reviewed, correct me if I'm wrong, that was to be reviewed after a three-month period, and that was going to extend for, I believe, a year. And then they would reevaluate it after that.
Correct, correct. So just some additional background for the request in general. When the COVID meal program started, when the senior center shut down, city staff started cooking meals in-house. Fast forward, once we reopened and we re-initiated a contract with the Fresno County to provide meals, seniors got accustomed to the meals that we were providing in-house. They'd like to see that kind of portion, those types of meals, return or stay. Because our current contract with FM AAA and the EOC provides county-provided meals, we were in works with the Healthcare District in potentially putting in a program or adding to programs that were already in place to help the nutritional needs for seniors in the area. Because the idea is that seniors that eat there, there's a more nutritious value for them, they're getting a meal, at least we know that, you know, it's something. And then to Chief Perkins' point, you know, their wellness starts with their nutrition and their socialization at the senior center and all that good stuff. So the Healthcare District put an ad hoc committee together. We've been working with them since December. Because we're a mid-year contract with Fresno County, we can't break away from that contract until the year is over. But essentially, the request in the ask is working with the ad hoc committee and seeing the potential of the city providing in-house meals on a regular basis. It's more costly for the city to do that, more staff hours for the city to do that, and so we would rely on a partnership that would essentially take on the bulk of that request. Right now, the contract with the county, you know, the amount, grand amount fluctuates between 18 to $32,000 a year, depending on their funding. This would be a more reliable request, it'd be more sustainable for the city to rely on. Again, we wouldn't be able to do it on a year-to-year basis, you know, and that's why I'm requesting at least a minimum of three-year to kind of get that going. And the continental breakfast that you were referring to is a partnership with Kingsburg Citizens, Inc. The senior center has their own nonprofit group. Healthcare District is working directly with them to fund a continental-type breakfast program for a year, and it gives them an opportunity to get more nutrition to the seniors, but it just also gives them an opportunity to get their name out there and kind of establish a more reliable, you know, partnership with the Kingsburg Senior, Inc. That program will still rely on city staff to run, manage, place orders and all that, so there's still that continued partnership that the city will have its hand in with that program. But it's more of a partnership between Senior, Inc. and Tri-County, so or Kingsburg Healthcare.
Adam, do other communities do breakfast and dinner for seniors or just lunch?
So we do not. Yeah, we do not. So Fresno County right now has 12 sites with the FM AAA program that just does a lunch program. And one of the concerns that they heard, the Healthcare District heard from our seniors was that the lunch meal is really the only meal that they get, whether they don't have the ability to cook at home, or they don't have the means to cook at home, they come to the senior center and we provide them that meal. And so that was kind of their, Healthcare District's attempt to say, how can we do more with them? And then also branched out to their partnership with K-Caps to see if there's a way that we could potentially do senior meal boxes once every week or once every month. So there is other workings that they're trying, but I think a focus that they have is senior nutrition, senior wellness, and so they definitely want to come behind the senior center and kind of get that going. And of course, the kitchen remodel project that's in the works, we'd like to kind of see that done, you know, within the next couple of months, or at least started, so that's, you know, another address to, you know, utilize the kitchen that they're helping fund, so.
Thank you for all of your work on this. Okay, so what we have before us is approval and submitting the applications for the eight proposed projects, or we could modify them. I'd like to suggest maybe we do some prioritizing on it, because our ask, we're not the only ones asking in our community, and our ask is well over what they have. So I don't know, what are your thoughts about maybe prioritizing?
I totally agree with the prioritizing. So, you know, I think that, you know, Chief Perkins kind of laid out the 1-2-5 scenario. I would like to go with that. I think Chief Dadian's items are going to be important to the Healthcare District as well, based on what I've seen as sitting there as liaison. And the senior meal is a little bit different for me now, because I know I proposed the senior meal, but then they just did a agreement for the continental breakfast with the seniors, Inc. And so I don't know where that's going to fall on their priority list. So at one time, I would have put that at the top, no disrespect, Chiefs, but, you know, the seniors feeding the seniors, I would have put that at the top, but now they're getting, you know, two more meals, so.
When we submit, can we give like a priority, or should we only pick a certain amount that, like, should we leave some out? Do you know when you submit to the Healthcare District?
When we submit applications, again, these are just the city's requests. They've had conversations in the past with the whole smorgasbord idea of giving them the opportunity to pick and choose the projects that they would like to see funded. They've had that conversation with Fire and with Community Services. So, I mean, council being able to narrow down our priority, because we work with Townsend, it makes it a lot easier on staff to kind of pass these out, and we're not bogged down on writing these ourselves, at least completely. So completely up to, I guess, the council's discretion if...
That does bring up a great point, though, Adam. So Townsend will also do grant writing for the state, right? Because that was one question that came up at the Healthcare District. It's like, well, are they just writing for the Healthcare District? And we're like, no, these are items that, you know, that Townsend will also go to the state, correct? I mean, if there's a grant opportunity with the state, they will explore that as well?
Correct. So we receive, I don't know if they're monthly updates or whenever there's an update of potential grants or asks, and department heads are able to review those, and if they fit within the scope of a certain project, then we kind of help guide them in that direction and kind of start the process that way, so.
I think we had a similar discussion the last go-around. I'm very nervous about submitting all of the Fire Departments, because that staffing, that number one, we can't lose that. And I'm worried if they see the two, three, four, five, like, they could choose something different when the staffing, and Chief also said that has to be the highest priority. If we don't have people, we can't serve our community in the way that now they know we can, and Chief's worked hard to build that up. In my opinions, that should be number one. I mean, we should definitely do that one, both of the police ones and the senior one. My question would be then on the Fire Department, like, in looking about how much they have, like, what else, if anything, should we move forward? Because I don't want something to be chosen over staffing.
It does feel like, yeah, I mean, they have a million dollars to give to the community, and if we're asking for all of it, it does seem like, well, yes, yeah. Yeah, I would agree with the two for the Police Department and definitely the senior meals. And, yes, the EMS positions, I think those, that's critical. And I would even give a whole lot of weight to your second item, to get the ambulance chassis and to get that going. And then if we did, that five would put us right around over, you know, over a half a million, but not as close, you know? Can we, can the ambulance cab and that, if we get the, if they would award us with the chassis and get that ordered, does the ambulance cab need to be done at the same time? Is that something that can wait at all, or?
Yes, it can actually wait. It's on a production line, so they have to order it from the manufacturer who builds it. That's what they wait for, and so once they receive the money, they pay that vendor, it gets placed in order, they build it, then it comes to them about eight to nine months later. So we would really be into the next fiscal year by then, and then you could begin bear these out over time, again, prioritizing the same items, so that they're actually supporting the things that they've been supporting. But again, this is kind of a balance between what you see as priorities and what their requests are to us to give them more options. So sometimes, you know, when we give them more options and they pick things that maybe aren't as essential to what we, we're the subject matter experts that are doing the job, and they're asking, well, what do you need? Well, this is what we actually need. The staffing and the chassis are the top two.
My concern of, I just don't want them to pick something else over the staffing, and I know you have more conversations with them, and the reason that I'm very concerned about that is because we're going to come up on a sunset of Measure E soon, and so that's within those three years. And what if we don't get it again? So I would like, if you can wait on that second item, I would like to stagger them out, because you can ask again next year if they approve the staffing, that's three years, right? But I don't know your needs like you know your needs. That's...
That need will, it's like a deferred cost of maintenance. The more you defer maintenance out, the worse the problem gets. Although we don't have a problem, per se, it's a matter of every year, each ambulance attributes 50,000 extra miles on the ambulance. So in three years, each one of them will have 150,000 miles on it. One of them currently has 150,000, the other one has 50,000. So we'll have 300,000 and 200,000 if we did it at the three-year mark now. That would add another 50,000, so you'd have one with, what is that, over 300,000 miles if it works, if everything works appropriately. So I understand your concerns, and again, that's, my professional opinion is if we don't ask, we may not get it. And again, I think they've worked well with the city. They will call us in and ask at different times, what is it? I think that's a relationship we've built with them over time. So I think it's something we can actually talk to them about, you know, is it something that they can move to a different grant cycle or something else that they've allowed in their funding items before?
But we also chance them doing the 110,000 and not the 375. Do you have it within your budget if it's a no to cover the other 50% of the positions?
Currently, yes, because we're experiencing an anomaly where we're getting paid twice, although it's not actually being paid twice. We have a new funding structure that came from the state called PPG EMT. That Private Provider Ground Emergency Medical Transport has actually seen everything that we talked about being seen, but it's still tenuous. And when I say tenuous, it could evaporate a year from now if it hits the state budget. So that's always the threat of it going away. So we have this anomalous piece of funding that we will see increase, that will cover that cost for approximately a year to 18 months. But after that year to 18 months, if we don't have that other part and that were to go away, you might see the part of, okay, now... you might see the part of, okay, now where are we at? And again, because we keep having the second ambulance maintaining its status, picking up those extra calls as we've, uh, brought to you before, as long as that stays on track, I mean, there's a lot of, lot of variables. You know, a lot of things in a flow chart of if this, then that, then that, then this. And it, it could be a domino effect to the negative, but it also could be a domino effect to the positive.
So you have it within your budget, but only for one year to eighteen months, for sure?
Right, and that, again, that's a very, again, conservative estimate if the PPGEMT program were to evaporate. There will be some other implications with another program that it's theoretically dual funding, and that will decrease, but it won't go away. So it will, it will regulate itself, but we don't know what that regulated number is. There's currently a, a group of subject matter experts in ambulance and Medicare, Medi-Cal funding that are working out that for larger agencies than us. And we're asking them to work on the same scenarios to give us some projections on what that might look like financially.
So then would you have it in your budget for the hundred and ten and then reapply next year and?
If we, yes, for the hundred and ten, if we only did that, absolutely, I mean, it's.
And then if you get.
I don't want to give you, I, I would, I would, I would be remiss in telling you the exact numbers because I don't think that's something that is current public knowledge. I, I think we're still waiting to see exactly how it's all working. But it, again, should cover that and more.
So you could order it and then reapply for it next year? And if you get the hundred and ten, then you could shift that towards it?
Correct.
I'm nervous about gambling with, with staff.
I, I share, I share your concerns.
I just makes me nervous.
Yeah, I share your concerns. I think, I think there are other things.
Yeah, you're right, I mean.
I think there are other things that, that, uh, Councilman Silva can explain to you possibly in a different setting, where, where those concerns have been expressed to the hospital district and what they have said in candor and not maybe in a public setting. So again, that may be something that you can discuss with them a, at a different time about their reluctance or willingness to do one thing or another.
What are your thoughts on how many of the, um, fire departments that we move forward?
Well, I, I think the sta, I think the staffing is critical, I'm with you on that. Um, I think the ambulance is critical too, I mean, but, you know, if you don't have staffing to drive the ambulance.
Yeah, it's a chicken and egg conversation.
So, um, I think if we, if we went to the healthcare district with the, the number one item from fire, the two for police, and then the, um, community services department with the senior center, I think that's a very good menu for them. Um, I would think that hits, checks kind of all the boxes in the city for all the citizens type of deal, in my mind. But chief's right, I mean, if you don't ask for the other stuff that you need, they did ask for a need list, not a wish list. That was, that was literally dictated in the meeting. We don't want a wish list, we want a need list, right? And so these are the needs. And so you give them the need list and then it's over, you know, the tax funds that they have, and then it starves out the others, so. The staffing's critical though, and I, I, I get what you're saying. If we give the other options, they might choose the, the chassis and the ambulance, but then we don't have the staffing, or we only have it for a short period of time. So that is a risk.
Yeah, it is, they're all calculated risks.
Yes. So I don't know if that helped, I like staying with the four items and then, you know, Adam and I can go, these are the four items of the eight or six. I mean, we don't even have public works on here, and there's probably some public works sidewalks and some things that they would entertain, possibly funding, but until we go to them, and like you say, the grant cycle's open for several months.
Correct, so closes May first, um, but this does give staff the opportunity to start working with Townsend, getting his applications completed and members put together. We still need some time in between, um, and we haven't met with public works, um, and if, if I may, sorry. All right, lost what I was going to say. Public works, we have, we have sat down with, uh, the other, other departments to come up with things that might fit within the scope. Um, and at this time, these were kind of the projects that we just kind of figured would, would best serve or be able to be kind of spread out through, uh, through the next coming year. Um, I know there were some ideas that we had regarding the pool and inclusive play and stuff like that. And, um, so we are researching those, but at this time we, we're kind of feeling, we still have to, um, put those on the back burner for, for possibly next year. Um, uh, the healthcare district does have a community development cycle for grants. Um, and you might be able to attest to it more, it's not a grant cycle, it's funding that they've set aside for the community, um, throughout the year, and that they can give throughout, without, without waiting for a cycle. Um, and so they've done that recently with, uh, co-community wellness program with a pickleball court. Um, so it's not to say that all of their, all of their funding, it waits for the grant cycle, it's just, um, um, kind of a more, more, uh, formal request process, um, that some of their board members would like to see. For that, and every year when we do submit these to them, um, Chief Perkins and I have always gone and done a presentation on the requests. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm more than positive that we can kind of persuade them to what our priority, priority list is, um, and kind of just share that with them. And we do have one-on-one meetings with them and board members that just ask initial questions about the projects because I know, I know they have questions and I know they want input from the community. Um, and so they've done really well with, with city staff on, on kind of getting the information they need, um, to go forward, so.
So if we haven't met with public works and you said there's some more things, I think you said with the pool, um, are we just looking at this to move some forward?
No, no, so we have, we have met with public works, um, and there are projects that fall within the community development, like the sidewalks at Memorial Park, um, potentially won't be essentially requests that the city might make for the grant cycle. It might be just additional partnerships, just like we saw with the water fountains downtown or the drinking fountains. These are projects that the healthcare deems, you know, important and they'd like to work on. Um, and so that would be, you know, off of the grant sky, the cycle scope. Um, and then regards to like inclusive play and pool, it won't be anything for the grant cycle this year. Um, if we can get stuff, um, in the works, then we could potentially request it in two thousand twenty-five, so.
Those are, Adam, those are, correct me if I'm wrong, those are normally in smaller denominations. So those aren't normally.
Correct, correct, correct.
Big, big, I think, I want to say it was twenty, is it twenty?
Thirty was the senior centers, so I don't know how, how much they fluctuate, but.
Okay, so we need a plan and a motion. I am comfortable with the police, both, the Kingsburg Community, um, Services, and number one for fire. I don't know about the number two. I'm worried about gambling with that, and I'd rather wait one year and ask for it when we have the three years. But I also don't know the conversations because I'm not on that committee.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, they've, we've, we've talked about all of these items on here and.
Ad nauseam.
It, it just depends on which way they, they want to go, really. I mean, he, he, Chief Perkins has done a great job, you know, laying out the groundwork for all the needs and necessities. But there's only, there's only so much money, tax money in their funds, there's only so much tax money in the city. And it's hard to pay for everything, right? So you almost have to pick, if, I, I completely agree with you, I mean, personnel is important. And I think that the ambulance is important too, and they've shown that they've, um, seen the value in that. But I honestly don't know if they're going to go for both. I mean, that's, those are big ticket items and that's going to deplete their, their budget. And, and then what, what will be left for the other items in the city that come before them? Like the continental breakfast with seniors Inc. So I have a little bit reservation giving the whole list and being way over their budget. They're going to look at it and go, we don't even have that much money. So, um, I would say the personnel is number one. I like your plan, the personnel is number one, um, both items on the, the police department and the community services. That takes you to about, what, five thirteen, over five hundred thousand? And then we can always, Adam, we can always go back for, you know, some sidewalk, if we have sidewalk project or if we have, um, core and play project or shade structure project, some of those things that fit into their wheelhouse also. We can always go back to them. And then when it comes to Chief Perkins' list of ambulances, we, next year, we try for the next year. Get the personnel first and then the people to drive it on the next cycle.
So you're, you say both police, the community, and then the first one?
Yeah, and the, yeah, staffing, staffing.
Yeah, I agree, the personnel, both of the police and the senior center, um, meals, yeah, I think that's the, um, safest.
Do you, and we need a motion if we're changing it from what's here?
I mean, that's really a cafeteria of choices. I think we'd like a motion of what you would, what your instructing staff to actually apply for. So it wasn't, you know, our, our ask tonight is direction, but a motion would, I think, be appropriate.
Okay, so the motion then would be, um, for the staffing for the fire department, both for police and then the community, the community one? I'll need that from one of you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is six point five crimes, uh, statistics report for October through December twenty twenty-three and general police department update.
Thank you, uh, member of the council, again, appreciate your time. So I want to, uh, just a housekeeping item, uh, in my staff report, there's, um, so last year, we started down the road of monthly statistics, uh, the council desired a quarterly report. We changed that about three, four months into the year. Uh, kept up with the monthly statistics, but going forward, uh, in this, starting this year, we'll see just a quarterly report. And then my, uh, my appearance here will coincide with that. So the monthlies will go away and be replaced by a quarterly. So I'll be here in January, April, July, and October. I missed calendar January, so that's why I'm here today. And, um, so let me, uh, let me tell you what's been going on the last few months. So, um, I'm just going to give you a, a, a highlight of some things that we've been working on, some pretty serious things. In November, we responded to an attempted burglary where the suspect was attempting to break into the house through a window. Um, the bedroom belonged to, uh, there was a grandmother, there were some grandchildren. This, the suspect had a, there was a restraining order against him. It's actually the, the grandmother's daughter, it was her boyfriend, who was the suspect. He had a relationship with his girlfriend's fourteen, thirteen-year-old child. So we arrested him. He has numerous sexual assault allegations in Fresno, Tulare, and Merced counties. We've been working with those agencies and there's, um, he's in custody and currently pending trial on, on those cases. And we are still continuing, taking violations of restraining order as he attempts to contact the victim, the thirteen-year-old victim. And to make it worse, his girlfriend married him while he was in custody. So it's, it's just really complex and there's a lot of detective work that goes into that. Um, but I don't even know how to explain this, but it's just some of the things we're doing. There, there's just a lot of processing going on and a, a great deal of investigative work behind all of this so that we can get a conviction, that's what we're shooting for in this one. Um, there was another kind of gang-related involvement, uh, over this past quarter that happened over at City Park. A juvenile was contacted by another juvenile to meet over there. Uh, the juvenile made the contact, showed up with his father, and then they started beating up the kid. So we're investigating that, and both the father and the son were arrested, booked into jail and juvenile hall. During the months of October and November, we saw an increase in vehicle burglaries, especially in the neighborhood west of, uh, Simpson and Draper Street. Vehicle windows were being broken, items taken without, uh, doors being opened. We had twelve of those during those two months, officers contacted a couple of juveniles after they committed a petty theft at a nearby store and found items that were connected with the vehicle burglaries. One of them confessed and identified three other juveniles who were involved. Uh, we served actually several search warrants in Kingsburg and Fresno and recovered some of that property. So we were able to get those back to the, the victims. Um, we, we're seeing a lot of, a big increase in juvenile crime and, you know, the, the situation in California is such that, uh, they've decriminalized almost all, uh, all juvenile-related crimes, so they're not kept at juvenile hall. And there's no more state institutions for juveniles anymore. Uh, they're all kept, uh, locally by the counties and they're just not even being kept there, so just. We see, we continue to see the same suspects doing the same thing over and over because of that. Uh, we also saw, and this is a little more recent, in January, um, increase in some commercial burglaries along, along Simpson and Ninety-Nine. We had four of them that occurred, uh, during January. Smashing, the suspects were smashing, uh, doors and would, um, get lottery tickets from the businesses and money, cash from the registers. Uh, when we were investigating a couple of those, we found a similar burglary nearby and that led us to Fowler with another burglary, um, uh, with some more evidence was collected. And so we've been making cases off of that one. We arrested the suspect and we tied him to a couple of our burglaries and the Fowler burglary. So we're working pretty hard with, uh, Fowler PD on that to get that going. So we're pretty happy about the end result on that one. We've also had, uh, several stolen plates, uh, recent, this is again recently in this quarter, uh, from, um, stealing license plates from vehicles. Uh, we ID'd the suspect and eventually arrested him. And, um, he was also wanted by Visalia PD, so we're, we arrested him on their warrant. Uh, matter of fact, one of their detectives was in our office today, very complimentary of the investigation that we put together. I'm very thankful for basically making his cases a lot easier, so we put a lot of investigative work behind that. Happy, again, with the outcome on that one. Overall, our, our part one crimes are down twenty-two percent over last year. So, uh, I'm sorry, from twenty-three over twenty-two. So, um, a tip of the hat to the officers and the professional staff who've been contributing to that. And one of the things that, you know, I always harp on is, is proactive police work and getting out in front of it. And, you know, that's kind of demonstrated by this, which was in December's report. You know, the blue line represents calls for service or activities initiated by the police officers and the red, it, it, um, indicates, the red bar indicates, uh, calls for service where some, a citizen picks up the phone or walks into the police department or otherwise contacts law enforcement. And we're in some cases, uh, a little bit ahead on some, some months, a little bit behind, but we're kind of running almost fifty-fifty. Uh, about six, seven percent of, um, calls for service, whether that's officer-initiated or citizen-initiated. So that is one of the reasons we had a twenty-two percent reduction in crime. The officers are out there making it happen, and they're, they're doing really good police work. Some of the other things I'd like to highlight, um, our training plan continued throughout, uh, twenty twenty-three with all officers attending perishable skills training. Again, that's twenty-four hours every two months, we do twenty hours every year on that. Sometimes thirty hours, it just depends, we're, we're tied in with the sheriff's office on their plans, so if they do thirty, we do thirty. But a minimum of twenty, so we're, we almost double down on that every year. And then individual training plans, depending on the assignment, you know, gang investigator course, basic investigative core course, sexual assault investigation, these are all forty-hour courses. In January, we did. In January, we did host a two-day sexual assault investigation course because we have our training room up and running now. Very happy about that. We were able to host officers from all over the valley and actually a couple of other officers from the Bay Area for a two-day sexual assault investigator course designed for patrol responders. And this is, uh, where we'll get a little bit of payback, a little return on investment for the remodel because we're, uh, I sent five officers to that paid for one and four we got for free because we hosted, because we had the facility to do that, so very pleased about that. I've assigned Officer Yvonne Reese to create content on social media. She's already put out some things, so she's gonna do that on a collateral basis, putting out stuff because that, that's how we reach people. That's how we do our recruiting. That's our community outreach. Um, uh, one of them, one method is through social media, so I have a, a friend, a, a young lady, her, her mother actually was my partner when I was in detectives, and, um, she's a highway patrol officer and she does social media for them, so I'm connecting the two of them to, uh, put those two together because Tierney Burke, the officer from the highway patrol, does a really good job of that, and Yvonne does a, a good job on her own, but, um, so we're gonna send her some training and connect her with Tiffany and, or, I'm sorry, Tierney, and we'll hopefully have one more best social media presence, which I've been looking forward to. We have two police recruits in the academy due to graduate in June. Very, um, pleased with them. And then I currently have one sergeant and one lieutenant vacancy, and I'll post recruitments for those probably next week. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Any public comment on this item? Council discussion?
Madam Chair, if I, if I could, uh, just, uh, maybe Chief, you can talk a little bit about the work that we've been doing based upon the public comment earlier this evening regarding animal control and, uh, City of Selma?
Sure. You wanna?
Yeah, I can talk, I mean, yeah, yeah, so.
We got the last part of it.
Chief, Chief has been, uh, in discussions with their chief, uh, since Second Chance ended their contract. They're honoring the same contract, uh, that Second Chance had with us, so we are, uh, in conversations with them to try and, uh, get an agreement specifically with the City of Selma, and some of that honestly is just based upon, um, them getting that facility up to speed and that, you know, them, you know, um, kind of working through their processes as opposed to, you know, us not, uh, desiring to work with them. So, uh, I know some animals have been taken there already, I think as Ms. Prado mentioned this evening, and, uh, so we are, we are continuing to work on that, and I will, I'm happy to reach out to Ms. Prado after sometime tomorrow so that she can have that same update as well, but Chief has been in pretty constant communication as well as Christina regarding the animal control stuff, uh, not only with Selma but with, uh, other jurisdictions to see if there are other options, uh, at our disposal should, should something not work out long-term, so.
Basically, we're operating off a handshake, uh, between Chief Alkres and myself and, and Alex and his counterpart. And we do pick up kittens. They rescued a, a mother and three kittens, I think it was last week or week before last. So it's, it's working, but again, um, at some point, we'll have to have a formal agreement, and we are certainly working towards that end. Alex especially is working towards that end, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Item seven, council reports and staff communication. Seven point one, community services commissions.
We haven't met since the last meeting.
Seven point two, public safety committee. Seven point three, chamber of commerce. We met last week and there was a lot of discussion about the success of the Blossom Trail opening, and, um, I know council member Silva helped out a lot with that, and they thanked him. There was also discussion about the website and reviewing a few things on that, and then focused on, um, upcoming car show and then Swedish festival. Seven point four, economic development.
We have not met.
Seven point five, finance committee.
We haven't met.
Seven point six, planning commission. Is that Vince?
It's Vince. Uh, planning commission is, as AJ reported on tonight, they've been working closely with him on the ADU process, so, um, that's been the majority of their work, I think, over the last couple of months.
Seven point seven, SKGSA.
Our meeting was moved, uh, to the twenty-eighth of this month.
Seven point eight, um, downtown business improvement district. I reported out last meeting and we have not met again since then. Seven point nine, council of governments. We meet a week from tomorrow, next Thursday. Seven point ten, council member reports.
I have three. Okay, real fast, I'll try to run through them. So, um, Kingsburg High School wrestling, um, is, they have five individuals that made it to state and five, five male individuals and one female. So that tied the record from back in ninety-seven, I guess, um, so that's good. They're down there wrestling it up, so we wish them well. Um, Kingsburg Healthcare District is, um, uh, as we mentioned earlier, Adam, the Wellness Day, they, they supported, um, Carly Guerrero, is that correct? They, they supported her in her Wellness Day, so that should be an amazing event. And then, um, the continental breakfasts, we've discussed with Seniors Inc., so they supported them. And then the other thing, uh, Vince and I attended the California League of Cities, um, dinner last night, and they had, the speaker was Lisa Smith Camp, the district attorney of Fresno County. And she, um, her new crusade, or maybe it's not a new crusade, maybe it's her crusade, um, is fentanyl and the importance of what's going on with fentanyl and how it's hurting ev- everyone, basically. I mean, it's the new drug of, of, um, the world we live in, and it's extremely dangerous because there's not a lot of warning signs of, it's just, you, you do it and you're addicted to it, and it just goes downhill spiral, and she mentioned that there was a, a college individual, law student from Fresno, that was at UC Irvine and succumbed to taking fentanyl and passed from it. So it can hit basically anybody, and she was an excellent speaker. Um, she is trying to adjust Proposition Forty-seven, which Chief, I wish Chief was here, he could talk more about Proposition Forty-seven, but she's basically trying to strengthen the law wrapped around drug trafficking, drug transportation, all of that, anything related to that, and trying to stiffen penalties, and, and so she's doing very good work. She did mention that she'll go anywhere anytime to talk to, um, especially schools because she seems, she thinks that that's major focus, and so I believe she's been here to the high school, um, once, and so, um, she offered her services if there was ever a need for it here in Kingsburg, so I just wanted to offer that up, and that's all I have.
Um, I have two things. I did forget to mention that at the chamber, we did talk about fentanyl. Um, it's come up at three or four different meetings that I've been at in the last two weeks, and also talking about maybe trying to figure out something where our businesses in Kingsburg can, um, have it on hand here. So it's interesting that it's come up several times recently, but we've had a couple moms in town that have gone to the different meetings and talked about their experiences and just how important it is for us to be prepared. Um, the other thing is on Friday night here, we're gonna host the Girl Scouts for a civic lesson, so if anybody wants to come and be part of that, um, Abby and I and maybe Stacy will, um, be giving those girls a civics lesson and they'll get to pretend to be us up here. It's a fun time, so six-thirty on Friday night. Seven point eleven, city managers report.
Just a quick report. Uh, I've talked previously about, uh, the donation of the Business Park sign, uh, in the Business Park. So, uh, Jolene, um, Daniel and I are working on getting some quotes, uh, to have that sign refurbished, potentially retrofitted with digital LED signage as well, so, um, get the lights up and going on it again now that it's, uh, back under some control, and then, uh, hopefully working out some sort of situation where people can start advertising on it again from the Business Park, so, um, just a brief update on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Item eight, future agenda items. We have none listed. Item number nine, adjourn our regular Kingsburg City Council meeting.